Good evening. Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, May 15, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, our pledge is to be Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for our mayor and our commissioners tonight. Lord, we ask you to lead and guide them for the best for the city of Brownsville. Lead and guide every presenter here in this meeting. Lord, we thank you for the privilege of voting in this nation, and we ask you to lead and guide our voters during this runoff election. Give us the best leaders for our community, our state, and our nation. Lord, this day where we're honoring police officers, we ask you to bless and protect each of them, especially those who have put themselves in harm's way protecting the city of Brownsville. Lord, we ask you to bless and protect each of them, bless and protect their families, and lead and guide each of us as citizens to give them the support that they need to do their job well, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Next, we will begin with the mayor's activity update.
I'd like to take this opportunity to just make two observations. The first one is, I'd like to thank everybody for all the different services that you're giving to the community, been through several historic events, and we've got some more events coming up, and I think that that's wonderful, the Main Street Group, et cetera, the Historical Society. But a lot of people, and I see a lot of familiar faces out there, who are doing tremendous work for this community, so I thank you, first of all, from the bottom of my heart. The second thing, May for me always represents graduation, so I give a shout-out to all the people who are graduating, whether they be from elementary school, high school, college, graduate work, and all those people. Congratulations for all that hard work. I know it'll pay off, and you are to be commended. So, I know you worked hard to get where you're at, so congratulations to all of the people here in the community who are going through graduation, and I'm sure there are some other graduates that are throughout the state and throughout the United States, so to all of those folks, congratulations. That's all.
Next, we have the commissioner's activity update.
I just wanted to apologize, but yet at the same time bring to notice that we had a lot of work going on within the Southmost area and within the streets, and just the congestion alone with traffic from Boca Chica International and Southmost was horrendous last week. It was taking folks an hour to get everywhere, wherever they needed to go, but rest assured that through cooperation with the state and with us here locally, we're bringing our streets up to par. The work that's being done isn't just a repave job, it's, they're going into the surface, they're digging in there, they're giving you a 15- to 20-year street. So many times, folks get frustrated because it takes us longer to get somewhere, but at the same time, do realize that within our new street plan, what we're doing is actually preparing our streets, those that we're working on, we've always been working, but those of us that we're working on right now, that we're preparing the streets for next 15, 20 years versus a five-year street. So, thank you, everybody, for their patience.
Mayor, I have a real quick note, just to thank everybody for their patience. We just repaved Austin Road, a big section of it that needed to be redone, so thank you very much, Public Works, and our city manager, Michael Lopez. I appreciate everything that you do for District 2. And second of all, I wanted to let everybody know, just a really quick update, that I traveled to Los Angeles last week, and I came back with, on such a high and really excited, because while I was there, it was a personal trip, but the director of Los Angeles Animal Services took a meeting with me, and I sat with them for an hour, and they run the most successful no-kill shelter in the entire nation, and they were so excited to sit down with Brownsville and just pour out all of their advice and tips on how we can get started and grant funding, all kinds of resources. So I really want you to know how hard we're working to get the no-kill shelter up and running, because every pet that comes into our facility matters, and they're all worthy of good homes. So I just really want to let you know that the city is working really hard on that. And the third thing, I have a very important note to add on the commissioner's update. It is very close to my heart. It has been one year since the disappearance of Ramiro Avila, also known as Kimberly. Kimberly's disappearance has affected not only her family, but the entire community of Brownsville. As a mother and as a public servant to the city of Brownsville, I deeply feel for Kimberly's family, and I urge anyone with information to come forward to the Brownsville Police Department. As with any missing persons case, Brownsville Police Department has been actively investigating Kimberly's disappearance and continues to follow leads that may provide insight on what happened to her. Please contact the Brownsville Police Department at (956) 548-7800 or Crime Stoppers (546) Tips, and just to remind you that all tips are anonymous. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go on to the proclamations.
Next, we have proclamations. The first proclamation is the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Chess Team. If you would please come up.
Right through there. Amen. Looks like a nice trophy. Y'all stand here and face the photographers. Thank you.
This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Vaqueros Chess Team. Whereas the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Vaqueros Chess Team claimed their first national champion title at the 2018 President's Cup during the Final Four of College Chess Competition. The competition was held March 31st through April 1st, 2018, at the Marshall Chess Club in New York, New York. Whereas the UTRGV Vaqueros Chess Team is comprised of chess grandmasters, Audrey, or Andrey, I'm not sure, I'm hoping I'm not doing that badly, Stekopin, a senior mathematics major from Russia, Carlos Hevia, a junior computer science major from Cuba, Vladimir Belos, a sophomore finance major from Russia, Camille Dragun, a freshman management major from Poland, and Hovanes Gabuzyan, a freshman computer, I'm very sorry for butchering your name, a freshman computer science major from Armenia, all under the direction of chess coach grandmaster Bartek Maseka. Whereas the President's Cup is an annual invitational team tournament opened to the top four U.S. schools from the most recent Pan-American Intercollegiate Chess Team Chess Championship, whereby this year's Final Four hosted at the Marshall Chess Club in New York City included UTRGV, Webster University, St. Louis University, and Texas Tech Lubbock. Whereas the UTRGV Vaqueros Chess Team beat five-time champions Webster University Chess Team in a 7.5 to 7.0 victory in what the World Chess Federation Arbiter called the strongest Final Four in the history of this tournament. And whereas this win marks a major achievement for the UTRGV Vaqueros Chess Team after they placed second to Webster University Chess Team in the Final Four of College Chess Competition in 2016. The UTRGV Vaqueros Chess Team has pursued a national championship victory since the chess program was established at the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do recognize and honor the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Vaqueros Chess Team and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to celebrate this national achievement by the students in our community. Done on this 15th day of May, 2018. Signed, Mayor Antonio Martinez and the City Commission.
Thank you commissioners. I would like to thank you very much for this proclamation. It's an honor for our UTRGV Chess Team to receive it. I am very proud of my students, of my team. Today with us, there was Hovanes and Carlos. Let me tell you that the National Collegiate Championship is organized since 1946, and it's for the first time ever, a team from south of Texas won that event. So, big congratulations to the students of UTRGV. I am very proud of them, and thank you very much for this.
You make us proud. Thank you.
The next proclamation is for the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Economics Team, which will be presented at the next City Commission meeting, so we'll go ahead and go on to the next proclamation for Mr. Mike Hernandez.
What?
This next proclamation is very important to all of us here in the city of Brownsville for very specific reasons. Mr. Mike Hernandez is the founder of the Cameron County Education Initiative, which is a training school, a training school, right, a school where you get a trade, and it is the only no-debt school in Brownsville. So right now, if you're sitting on the couch looking for work, you don't have any training, you can go to Mr. Hernandez's school. He has built it in a way that you will not have any debt, and you will get your certification. And another reason that we are very excited to have Mr. Hernandez here at City Hall today and celebrate him is that he has been one of the most generous philanthropists within the city of Brownsville, probably within the last decade. Mr. Hernandez has given $250,000 to Guadalupe Middle School, sorry, I'm telling everybody your business, $1.8 million to Texas A&amp;M. And what is very special about that donation, and you'll all understand, is that that has sent 30 children, first-generation college students. Nobody in their family has ever graduated college. Mr. Hernandez has sent 30 children from Brownsville, full-ride scholarship. They are taken care of in their dorm, they're all honor students, they are all doing the best that they possibly can, and that is thanks to Mr. Hernandez. He has given them hope and a future, and he is an incredible, incredible, great man, and I'm not done yet. He has also gifted $100,000 to the Gladys Porter Zoo, another $100,000 to TSTC for Brownsville students to attend and specifically train in STEM studies. Another really cool thing is that a lot of people from around Texas have found his school, and now they're trying to start and develop the school that you have built in other cities in Texas. And so, believe me when I say that Mr. Hernandez is truly, truly one of the greatest things that has ever come from Brownsville. He's born and raised in Brownsville, and we are so grateful to you for the way that you invest and you give back to your community. And the most important thing, and the one thing that I really, really appreciate about you, is that you believe in Brownsville. A lot of people say they do, but you continue to prove that the children of Brownsville and the future of Brownsville truly is important, and we thank you for that. You still have to read your proclamation, and if you want us to say something, you still have to read it. Stay put.
Do you want me to read it?
Oh, I'm gonna read it, but don't you want to say something?
You can read it.
I'll read it. Okay. So, without further ado, I will read your proclamation. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Mike Hernandez III. Whereas Mike Hernandez III was born in Brownsville, Texas to Mike Junior and Marianne Hernandez, and was educated at the Texas A&amp;M University. Mike and his wife Kelly Hernandez are parents to four beautiful children, Cody, Chase, Madeline, and Olivia. Whereas Mike Hernandez III founded Cameron County Education Initiative, a nonprofit trade school established in 2017 in Brownsville, Texas to provide affordable career training for local families. Whereas, the Cameron County Education Initiative provides customized courses for industry-specific needs in concert with strategic economic development efforts to create a local substantial workforce capable of serving the needs of the community. Whereas, there are 40 students currently enrolled in Cameron County Education Initiative with 20 students in the first graduating class set to celebrate a graduation ceremony on June 28th, 2018. Whereas, the students of Cameron County Initiative contributed their talents and skills to construct little libraries to promote literacy in our community. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Michael A. Hernandez III, and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to visit the Cameron County Education Initiative and support the trade education in our community. Done on this 15th day of May, Antonio Martinez, Mayor, and the City Commission.
I want to say thank you first to Mayor Martinez and all of the commissioners, especially Commissioner Tetra. I've been very fortunate in my life. One of the big gifts that I've received is to be able to do things like this, to give back to my hometown, and I must say that I've been very fortunate. I've received, and I say this humbly, a lot of honors, but this is probably my most important one, the one that means the most to me. Brownsville, I do care about Brownsville, you're right. I do think that Brownsville has a lot of potential. I think I've probably made that more clear, my thoughts on that, more clear than people probably want to know. But at the end of the day, I really do believe it. I believe that, well, I know for a fact that this is the fastest-growing population of young people anywhere in the state, and so Brownsville's future is the state's future. And I think the leaders in Austin understand that. And so, the things that we're trying to do here, believe it or not, are a model to be used for the rest of the state, all the way from here to Paso, we can transform an entire region. And so, all that starts with education, and that's why I'm involved in this, I'm involved in the scholarships and other things, because if we have a well-trained workforce, whether that's university students, trade school students, obviously, I think highly of them, but education is the key, is the start, and once we have an educated, trained workforce, trained for the new opportunities of the future, things like advanced manufacturing, of course hospitality and tourism, or other things that, there are low-hanging fruit here in this area, given the geographic location and a lot of other factors. Brownsville is poised, the valley is poised to be, and this is someone who is in the business of seeing these things, is poised to be the next boom, is going to be in the valley, and we're going to start it right here in Brownsville. So, I thank the city for everything that they've done. They've been very helpful at every turn, supportive at every turn, everything that we've done, example, today. So, I just want to say thank you again. This is a tremendous honor, and we're going to continue.
I think I'd like to recognize Aquate. I happen to have met him. That's one of your young people.
Yes, can they?
Well, I'd like for him to stand up, yeah, because this is a product of what we got.
Absolute.
And I owe him a book. I told him I was going to give him a book.
Although I mentioned it.
Yeah, no, I know.
Just in case he forgets.
Good evening. Mayor Martinez, Commissioner, Mr. Hernandez, thank you very much, members of the audience and my classmates here. I'm Fabio Flores, and I'm here on behalf of the construction students at CCEI, and we'd like to donate these lending libraries to the public community. What began as a simple project quickly evolved into labor of love. Each of those adding touches that reflect our favorite stories, our children, and there was even one that was inspired after you came to visit us last week. Our hope is for the families to take, to enjoy as much as we enjoy building them. I look very happy there. I would also like to thank our Parks Department for asking us to participate in this project, and, excuse me, for asking us to participate in this project. And our instructors, Mr. Flores and Mr. Hernandez, for their guidance. Without them, we wouldn't have been able to do this so beautifully. At this time, if I may, I would like to recognize my classmates and their designs.
Sure.
We have, well, the Dr. Seuss, you're never too old, too wacky, or too wild to pick up a book and read to a child. This Dr. Seuss library was inspired by Valente Cortez. That one right there. Oh, it wasn't finished, but that's the one. My brother Fabian designed the Snoopy library. His intent was to create something that would attract adults and who in turn would read to their children. Besides, who doesn't love Snoopy? The Giving Tree. That's the Giving Tree. The Giving Tree is all about giving. It represents what CCEI and our school founder is all about. It was made by José Luis Trejo. Now, Mr. Hernandez, our school founder is here today, and I'd like to thank him for creating this school. My wife and I both attend, both attend, and on behalf of my kids, thank you for believing in us and for your support, for giving us this opportunity as well. There was an old woman who lived in a shoe. Pretty sure you guys know that one. That was designed and built by myself. It represents my wife and my four children, sometimes during vacations.
There it goes.
There it is. Sometimes during vacations, and at times, it kind of feels like we live in a small shoe for kids. We all had a part of Humpty Dumpty. We used a sponge and some white paint to give it a great look, even Dr. Reader helped in on this one. Finally, we have today, today a reader, and tomorrow a leader, and the CCEI library. Reading on the doors of the CCEI library is something, or you told us last week, we're all builders, not just builders of buildings, but builders of lives and builders of futures. We believe that if we stick to the program and follow CCEI and Mr. Hernandez's lead and remember to serve our God, our families, and our community, we believe that if I may call your son, it all ends well. Again, thank you, City of Brownsville, for including us in this project, and thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for creating this school, and I appreciate everything you do for us.
And that young man, his dad is an instructor, okay? Just so you know, they're at the same place. Thank you.
Next, we have National Police Week.
I'd like to say it's an honor and a privilege to present this proclamation tonight and begin by personally thanking our police chief and all the members of our law enforcement community for their dedication and service. After reading thousands of police reports during my 32 years of service as municipal judge, I can attest to the sacrifices our law enforcement personnel have made for our community. So we give thanks today for their commitment to serve and protect our community. So, this is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating May 15th, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 13th through 19th, 2018, as National Police Week. Whereas, the Brownsville Police Department was founded in 1859 in Brownsville, Texas, and is comprised of 245 law enforcement officers led by our police chief, Orlando Rodriguez, the Brownsville Police Department is committed to providing proactive, professional, and effective public safety and community service by employing integrity and fairness through community partnerships for the enhancement of the quality of life in the city of Brownsville. Whereas, Peace Officers Memorial Day was first established on October 1st, 1961, when the United States President John F. Kennedy signed a bill into law designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Today, Peace Officer Memorial Day and National Police Week pay tribute to local, state, and federal law enforcement officers who have died or who have been disabled in the line of duty. Whereas, in 2017, 14 law enforcement officers died in the line of duty across the state of Texas, and a total of 129 officers were killed across the United States. The city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Police Department mourn the loss of the men and women who, without regard to self-interest, so courageously defended the law and their neighbors. Whereas, all citizens must recognize the responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices that local law enforcement officers make daily to ensure the safety and well-being of their community. And whereas, by supporting the efforts of law enforcement officers and reporting crime, the residents of Brownsville, Texas may aid the Brownsville Police Department in providing a vital public service that includes safeguarding life and property and working tirelessly to protect the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate May 15th, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 13th through 19th, 2018, as National Police Week, and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to take part in appropriate ceremonies and observances in which they join together in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in so doing have established for themselves an enduring reputation for preserving the rights and securities of all citizens. Done on the 15th day of May, 2018, by the mayor and the commission of the city of Brownsville.
Thank you.
Next, we have our presentations. Employee of the Month, Sergeant Fernando Flores.
Employee of the Month Sergeant Fernando Flores.
Mayor Commissioners, it's an honor to be here tonight for this very special occasion when we celebrate Police Memorial Week and Police Memorial Day. That proclamation was amazing, so thank you so much. It'll probably go up on the walls of our office at the Police Department. Mayor Commissioners, as we celebrate Police Memorial Week, we take this opportunity to recognize very special officers past and present. And we start with our Employee of the Month, Sergeant Fernando Flores. This 10-year veteran was given the task of organizing our full-time Bike Patrol Unit in response to the challenge given us. As you know, Mayor, we've had many discussions and commissioners about the need for the presence in the downtown area, and so we gave this task to Sergeant Flores. And he ran with it and he put together an amazing team. At the time, we knew that merchants, some of the downtown merchants were even afraid that they would lock their doors at lunchtime because they didn't feel comfortable. Since then, they unlocked our doors and our officers come in and out freely. And we give credit to the presence downtown to that response from the community in the downtown area. He's, the presence of the Bike Patrol Unit, and some of them are here tonight, has made a positive impact with our merchants, shoppers, visitors, and students as well. Sergeant Flores is very dedicated, reliable, and respectful of others, and he strongly supports the department and the city's mission, and that is service to others. As Employee of the Month, Sergeant Flores receives a pin. He gets, he receives a plaque. And a very nice watch. I don't know if it's weatherproof. You're on the Bike Patrol, but you can still wear it when you go out. And also Sergeant Flores is, as Employee of the Month, he's also eligible for Employee of the Year at the end-of-the-year banquet and of course, the day off with pay. And please help me recognize Sergeant Flores for his selection of Employee of the Month in May of 2018.
First, I want to thank the mayor and the City Commission for this wonderful recognition, the chief and his comasta for all their support. I would also like to thank my beautiful families sitting right over here, my wife Cynthia, my daughter Megan, Miranda, and Kavy for all their love and support. I love you guys. But most of all, I'd like to thank my, our Bike Patrol Unit. It's through their hard work and dedication I get to stand here and receive this wonderful award. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can tell they're retired, they're freshly shaved. They had, I had to interrupt their retirement beards in some of these cases. Mayor Commissioners, tonight, we recognize and give thanks to retired police officers, Brownsville police officers, and we thank them for their dedication to the community and for their many years of service. These men sacrifice so much to fulfillment of their calling, and that is to serve others. We also want to thank their families that are here tonight for supporting them throughout the years and helping them get to this life achievement. And I'm going to start tonight with recognizing Officer Tommy Clipper. Tommy Clipper is actually a U.S. Marine Corps veteran, and he was hired in September of 1990, and some of his assignments included the Patrol Division, the Detectives Division, and Tactical Team Division. And Detective Tommy Clipper, or TC as he's affectionately called, retired in December of 2016 after 26 years of service. Thank you, Tommy.
All right, Clipper.
Next, we have retired Officer Alfredo Fred Gonzales. Fred came to us in 1997, and he worked in patrol and he made a name for himself as a traffic officer and as a field training officer where he trained others. And don't be deceived by his 20-year career, he actually had law enforcement experience up the valley before he joins Brownsville. So it was more than a 20-year career. So Fred, we thank you for your 10, 20 years of service. Next, we have Detective Danny Marks. Danny is also a U.S. Marine Corps veteran, and he hired, he hired on with us in September of 1991, and he worked very many assignments, including the Patrol Division, the Criminal Investigations Divisions, the Narcotics Division. He was on the U.S. Customs Task Force and of course, patrol duties as well. His wife Terry currently serves in the department. And Danny retired after 26 years of service in April of 2017. To see it would be like to be away from his wife, not having to work together at the same time. But we understand it hasn't been easy, but they're having a great time. She takes as much vacation as she can to join him on his travels. Danny, thank you so much.
All right, Danny.
Next, we have Tony Flores. Tony Flores is a U.S. Army veteran, and he hired on in February of 1992, and he started out in patrol work, and he finished his career after many years in the Detective Division, retiring in April of 2017 after 25 years of service. Tony, thank you very much. Next, we call on Harry Silva. Harry hired on in 1989, and he spent a lot of his early years after patrol in the Southmost Community Network Center. He was actively out there working with crime prevention efforts with children in the different schools, in schools throughout Brownsville and a lot of community events. And after 28 years of service, he retired in June of 2017. Thank you so much, Harry. Next, I call on Joe Davila, Sergeant Joe Davila, a U.S. Air Force veteran, and he hired on in September of 1991. Worked many assignments, including the Patrol Divisions, Detectives Divisions, Special Investigations Unit, Crime Scene Supervisor, and Narcotics. And he was promoted to Sergeant in 2007, and he retired in October of 2017. And he's also credited with founding the 5K Run With the Police event that we have every year. This sergeant has, because of his efforts, has raised over $30,000 for charities in Brownsville. Thank you so much, Sergeant. Next, we have Chris Ortiz. Chris hired on in 1989, and after foot patrol work, foot patrol work, he worked in the Special Investigations, SIU, and he's one of the few officers that has ever been selected and worked on the FBI Task Force for which we are very grateful for. And he finished his career as a patrol officer and training others. And he retired in December of 2017 after 28 years of service. Chris, thank you so much. Next, we have Jesus Jesse Vallejo. Jesse's a U.S. Army veteran, and he hired in 1991, and he did a lot of work in the Patrol Division and Detectives Division and finished up in the Patrol Division. And he's an avid racquetball player, and I think he still does it to this day. And he participates in police games to help also in those efforts. And Jesse retired in December 2017 after 26 years of service. Finally, we have Dan Gonzalez. Dan just retired last week, so. That's why he's smiling so much. Dan is an Air Force veteran, and he hired on, and I tell you, I have to credit Orlando Vasquez for getting this shadow box done in a week's time, or actually, less than a week. So, he's a U.S. Air Force veteran, he hired on in 1989, and he worked crime prevention efforts. He worked in community affairs at one of the network centers in patrol, and he retired just May 7th after 29 years of service because he wanted to get in on the action tonight. Yeah, man. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Sir, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you for your service. Next, we have the Medal of Valor.
Mayor Commissioners, it's my honor tonight to recognize and give thanks to these men standing in front of me today and in front of you all. We are honoring these heroes, and these men currently serve on the force, and tonight we are recognizing them for valor and the performance of their duties. I will read their acts of heroism, and I am honored to do so. And they are Sergeant Troy Arnold. Sergeant, on January 26, 2016, at 11:35 PM, Sergeant Arnold responded to a shooting at 524 Santiago Lane. The shooter had shot an off-duty federal agent and fled the scene in a Lincoln Navigator with the agent's weapon that he had wrestled from him. At 12:05 AM, Sergeant Arnold was advised that the Cameron County Sheriff's Department deputies were in pursuit of the suspect after locating him. Sergeant Arnold responded to the area of the pursuit that ended on Camila Street. The suspect stopped, exited his vehicle, and in the middle of Camila Street, ran toward his residence at 578 Camila. Sergeant Arnold, upon his arrival on Camila, exited his unit and pursued the suspect. While pursuing the suspect, he saw gunshot flashes coming from the suspect's weapon and heard bullets coming at him. Sergeant Arnold exhibited uncommon courage and continued to pursue the suspect. While at the scene, the suspect fired towards the deputies, endangering their lives with his conduct. The suspect began moving towards Sergeant Arnold and refused to comply with the deputy's commands to stop and drop his weapon. Sergeant Arnold observed the suspect swinging his arms around his head with the weapon still in hand. The suspect refused to comply with deputy's commands to drop the weapon, and shots continued to be fired by the suspect. One of the bullets struck, struck and killed an innocent bystander. Sergeant Arnold took immediate action in defense of the deputies and himself and fired two rapid shots at the suspect. The suspect fell, but retained his grip on the pistol he was carrying. Sergeant Arnold believed the suspect was going to engage them further, and Sergeant Arnold continued to fear for the lives of the deputies and his own, and fired another round at the suspect until he saw the weapon fall from the suspect's hand. The wounded suspect attempted to grab the weapon, but it was kicked out of the reach of the suspect by one of the deputies. The suspect was then handcuffed and the weapon was secured. Sergeant Arnold, exhibiting uncommon bravery, acted in the best interest of the citizenry and fellow law enforcement officers by continuing to pursue a suspect who had no intention of surrendering. Bravery is not common, nor is commendation. With gratitude and with great honor, I bestow this commendation for uncommon bravery and valor to Sergeant Arnold for his heroic actions on the night in question. On the afternoon of June 8th, 2017, Brownsville Police Officer David Shacklin responded to a suspicious person call on the city's east side. This would turn out to be the beginning of a violent crime spree committed by a county jail inmate that had been taken to 3675 Boca Chica Boulevard for routine medical care. On arrival, the inmate overpowered the transport deputy by beating him and by slashing his neck with a makeshift blade. The deputy miraculously survived this vicious attack. The suspect took the deputy's service weapon and fled to a nearby neighborhood. The suspect went house to house and forced his way into a residence on Fruitdale Street. While in the residence, the suspect demanded the keys to a getaway car and was met with no resistance from the family that had just sat down for lunch. While the family was preparing to comply with the suspect, the suspect, without reason, shot the man of the house at point-blank range, killing him. After making his getaway in the family's car, the suspect vehicle was located on the city's north side, and a pursuit was initiated. The suspect drove at over 115 miles an hour and was being followed by Officer Shacklin and other officers. Officer Shacklin maintained his composure, giving clear and concise information on the suspect's actions and direction of travel. Upon reaching the neighboring jurisdiction of San Benito, the suspect drove into a business parking lot with no way out. Faced with imminent capture, the suspect began firing at Officer Shacklin while still inside of his own vehicle. One of the suspect's bullets landed inches away from Officer Shacklin's head, striking the roof of the police car. Officer Shacklin maintained amazing bravery and took immediate action to protect himself and other officers that were also on the receiving end of the suspect's attack by exiting his police car and returning fire on the suspect. As a result of Officer Shacklin's quick and courageous action, the suspect was shot and killed. Officer Shacklin displayed tremendous courage while under fire and is hereby recognized for his heroic actions. This is an incident involving these officers at the same time. On October 5, 2017, at approximately 10:40 AM, Brownsville Police Officer Jaime Ortega and Detective Lorenzo Rosales responded to 55 West St. Charles to assist with the serving of a felony burglary warrant along with other detectives. The burglary task force and auto theft agents were attempting to serve a warrant on a suspect who had a long criminal history. The suspect had a history of assaulting police officers, burglary, theft, evading arrests, and others. When the burglary detectives approached the suspect, who appeared to be sleeping on a sofa, he suddenly jumped up from the sofa, brandishing a knife, waving it at detectives in a life-threatening manner, advising them that he was not going to go back to prison. The detectives stood their ground in an effort to assess the situation that they were faced with. Officer Ortega, hearing that the suspect had a knife, and also knowing that none of the detectives had body cams to film the suspect's violent actions, and without concern for his own safety, bravely worked his way to where he was between the detectives and the suspect. Detective Rosales, in an effort to back up Officer Ortega, also placed himself in a precarious position to the left of Officer Ortega. The apartment was very small and made moving around difficult, and an attack was very likely. The suspect disregarded officer's repeated commands to drop the knife he was holding, and he rushed at the officers, raising the knife towards them while doing so, placing them not only in fear for their own lives, but also for the lives of their fellow officers. Officers Ortega and Detective Rosales discharged their weapons, striking the suspect, causing him to fall to the floor. The suspect later died at a local hospital. Officer Jaime Ortega and Detective Lorenzo Rosales are hereby commended for their acts of valor in the face of danger, and I thank them on behalf of their fellow officers, as well on behalf of the citizens of Brownsville and the Brownsville Police Department. for all the tremendous job they do day in and day out, mostly unnoticed, it goes unnoticed. And they don't ask for attention, they just do their job. One of the tens of thousands of calls per year, and they do it with so much dedication and in the instance of these four gentlemen here with so much pride and so much courage. And I couldn't be prouder to stand before these distinguished gentlemen, and I thank them tremendously for what they have done in service of their community and their fellow officers, and I'm honored to stand before you gentlemen today and recognize you in front of your friends and family and your colleagues and our commissioners. Thank you so much. In the closing, Mayor Commissioners, I want to tell you that we at the Police Department, all of us are so grateful for your one-way bringing support of us and what we do. You believe in us, you trust us, and you support us, and for that, we are so grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
Congratulations.
Next, we have consent agenda items A through D.
May I approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have our public hearings. Public hearing number six. Public hearing in action on ordinance number 2018-1644 authorizing the issuance of City of Brownsville Texas Utility System Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2018, providing for the payment of the principal of and interest of the bonds by lien on and pledge of the net revenues of the system, providing the terms and conditions of such bonds and resolving other matters incident and relating to the issuance, payment, security, sale, and delivery of such bonds, including the approval and distribution of an official statement, authorizing the execution of a paying agent register agreement, a purchase contract, and an escrow agreement and/or deposit letter, complying with the requirements of the depository trust company, delegating authority to the city manager and certain members of the city or Brownsville Public Utilities Board staff to execute certain documents relating to the sale of bonds, enacting other provisions incident and relating to the subject and purpose of this ordinance, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Chief Commissioners. My name is Leandro Garcia, Chief Financial Officer for Brownsville PUB. We're here tonight seeking authorization to issue some refunding bonds. Our board of directors approved us moving forward with this transaction this evening. Mr. Jorge Garza will be providing a brief overview of the transaction.
Thank you, Leandro.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, Mayor, members of the Commission. My name is Jorge Garza with Estradino Jose. We serve as financial advisors to the Public Utilities Board and the City of Brownsville. We have an opportunity to refinance a couple of series of bonds that are outstanding. In page, the slide that I just put up presents the list of all of the outstanding bonds of the utility. The 2008 and the 2012 series are outstanding and they are candidates for refinancing for savings. Next page, we list the $9,685,000 of the series 2008 that where the interest rates today are lower than the rates when they were sold. And also on the next page, we present the 2012 series where there are approximately $5 million bonds there that are also available to refinance at a lower interest rate. In combination, on this page, I am presenting the total savings that are available at the interest rates that we used from, I believe this was last week's interest rates. The transaction would result in $1.3 million of interest saved over the life of the bond issue. It's well above the targets for considering a bond issue. And the total savings, $1,003,000, generate 7% present value. The next page is the parties that are involved, us, your financial advisor, Bond Council, OREC, all the parties. The underwriter will be Frost Bank with Hilltop and RBC as the co-managers. The next page, I present the timeline. We're here today on May 15 for asking the Commission to authorize the issuance of the bonds and delegate the authority to bring the transaction to market on June 8 with a closing on July 10. Any questions?
I heard it yesterday.
Yes.
I need a motion. Oh, public hearing, I'm sorry, that's right. We don't have those at PUB. Anyone here on this issue? If now entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close, public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
I need to have a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number seven. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2018-1645 declaring the existence of a public necessity for the acquisition by agreement or the use of eminent domain to condemn property of potential reversionary interest in property already owned by the City of Brownsville, Texas for use in connection with the restoration of the Resaca Boulevard.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm just here to introduce Paul Raddick. He's the attorney, our attorney, along with PUB on this project. It is the Resaca Boulevard Restoration Project, Bank Enhancement Restoration Project. And he's here to talk about all the legalese of why we have to do this.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I'll make it brief. You don't have to hear from me very often because we try our best to resolve all the city's acquisitions amicably. This is the Resaca Boulevard/Resaca Restoration Project. As you know, the city's been blessed to receive some federal funding and it's basically a pilot program, the restoration of this first segment of the Resaca. Assuming it goes well, we're working on getting some other funding, as you know. And we've been given the green light to do the acquisitions, the property interest acquisitions, so that the restoration can begin. The good news here was that the city already owns this property, but there were some outstanding reversionary interests that date back to 1934, as crazy as that sounds, and the federal government said we have to go acquire those. And so this is the ordinance that allows us to do the condemnation process and so that's all we're asking you to do. Any questions for me?
This is a public hearing again. Anyone here on this issue? Have now entertained a motion to close?
Motion to close, public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Paul. Good to see you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next, we have public hearing number eight. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-078 to rezon from dwelling Z to apartment G for lots 3 and 4, block 1, Gene subdivision located near Alton Blor Boulevard.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. This first case is 6.40 acres. They are asking it to be rezoned from apartment G to dwelling Z. This is part of the Transition West District and town corridor and town corridor in our future land use plan. The Transition West District is predominantly residential with a healthy mix of community facilities, commercial businesses, and institutional uses. The town corridor is primarily residential with small clusters of commercial land use at regularly spaced intervals. Residential uses should have a density of three dwelling units per acre and should primarily consist of single-family dwellings. Here is an aerial for this property. It is near Alton Blor and Tandy. To the north, south, east, and west are single-family dwellings. Also to the west are public schools, including Stillman Middle School. You can see a part of the north side of the property is a resaca and to the south of the property, it is a drainage easement. This is not a specific use for it, however, the developer has provided a preliminary site plan and some renderings. So here are some of the renderings. This would be the entrance along the resaca. There were four protests submitted. The total percentage was 7.9% of the area within the 200-foot radius. We are recommending a conditional overlay to require the following development standards: a maximum of 62 apartment units. Only one entrance will be permitted. It shall be located at the Alton Blor Boulevard and Lakeside Drive intersection and the developer will pay for the cost of the traffic light. The developer has agreed to this and the one entrance with the traffic light was recommended by our traffic department, who also conducted a traffic analysis and concluded that with this traffic light, there would be no major impact on peak or non-peak traffic along Alton Blor. There were 33 mailouts and four written opposition. Again, that's 7.9%. And the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling Z to apartment G.
Mayor and Commissioners, we did, I believe, reach out to the parties regarding this and the conditional overlay was more kind of the conversation piece that they came up with. So I just wanted to share that, that this was, we did have individuals who were protesting and emails came through. The department didn't make contact with both parties to see if there was anything resolved. As of now, we assume this is the conditional overlay that they've kind of agreed upon, depending on how the public hearing goes.
Okay, and this is public hearing. And yeah, I think most of us got copies of those opposition, you know.
I got way more than four complaints.
There were four sets of signatures that were submitted. Of those signatures that were submitted, a total of 7.9% of the area within 200 feet were represented.
Somebody else here on this issue? Are you all here on this issue?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Please state your name. Mayor, Commissioners, Marcus Bots, I'm here to protest this, to hope that you all oppose this issue. I'd sent you all an email, I hope you had the time to read it, express some of the concerns I had, but my main issue on this is the safety. I mean, this is the worst place that we could put something like this. I know the proposal was actually 69 units. I thought it was 64, now I'm seeing 62, but either way, that's, I mean, that's like the size of Briarwick subdivision. I think we have like 65 or 66 houses in our area. So here we are trying to condense another Briarwick into this small area and there are actually two schools across the street, at Stillman and Ituria. It gets crazy at certain times of the day. Dangerous, very dangerous, trying to come off of Candy Road and take a left. I mean, you're praying that you don't get hit by a car. And I hope nobody was hurt yesterday, but there was an accident yesterday, right there at this intersection. It's a dangerous place to do this. I mean, you can see on the map that, I mean, you're going to have Tandy Road and then, I don't know, 30 yards away, you're going to have the new entrance. And to turn left from Tandy Road, we won't be able to do it. If their car's now backed up there trying to turn into this apartment complex, we won't be able to turn left because we won't be able to get to that center lane. And we got to get our kids to school, we got to pick them up. Both schools are doing their deal at the same time, so there's nothing that we can do. I noted in my email that sometimes we have BISB police officers out there trying to help out with traffic, but it's still dangerous. Now, it's not just at that time. There is a curve there and the speed limit is 50, 55. A lot of people don't obey by that speed limit, maybe going 60, 65. They're coming around this curve. If we're pulling out to go right or even left from Candy Road, good luck. I mean, when I take a ride, I have to gun it because I don't want somebody coming up from me at 60 miles an hour hitting me in the rear end, so that's my main concern. Other people have voiced other concerns, but to me, that's my main concern. My family's got to be safe and this just cannot be.
Mark, had they brought to your attention the fact that now that he's willing to put in a light? Does that sway you in any way?
A light will not help.
Okay.
I mean, it won't. I mean...
Do you all have an HOA there?
I'm sorry?
Do you all have an HOA? A homeowners association?
Not an official.
Not an official? Okay.
But I mean, and I was never contacted, I was one of the protestors. I went and got, I mean, you can see the blue dots. Everybody in pretty much yellow there in Briarwick, I turned in their signature, but because I didn't read the rules, it's 20% of the area, not 20% of the people in the area. So I thought I had enough signatures, but it's literally the mathematical area that you need 20% of, so. I mean, most of this is Drainage Canal, most of this is Candy Road, most of this is Alton Blor, most of this is the Resaca. I don't know how we're going to get 20%, but either way, I turned in all the names of Briarwick. None of them are for this, none of them.
Is there a buffer between you and the proposed dwelling?
Is there a what?
Is there a buffer between you and the proposed dwelling?
There's an easement, a drainage easement.
Only the drainage easement?
That's it.
And the resaca's on the other side?
The resaca's on the other side of it. So he'll be staring at it.
He lives?
He lives on one of those houses that got the notice. He'll be staring at it from his backyard.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
How about next person? Please state your name for the record.
My name's Leo Garza. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. I too am a resident homeowner in Briarwick subdivision, have two children that go to Ituria Elementary. We take that left turn every day, about 7 o'clock, they're on the chess team and so we got to get there early. The congestion there is significant. It's very dangerous coming out of that subdivision, off of that road. If you were to go out through the other side, it's even more dangerous because you'd have to go straight shot into Ituria for the most part. There's also two other schools within a mile and a half of Ituria and Stillman, so there's a lot of traffic and that's just on Alton Blor alone. You've got Keller and Mansano, I believe, right down the road. And you've got, in Heritage Place, you've got a school in there as well, two schools. So the amount of traffic going through that area is very significant and it's a very dangerous curve, like Mark has referenced. It's a very dangerous curve and it's a risk every time we pull out of that neighborhood. So if you were to add another 62 families to that area, 62 vehicles trying to get out at the same time every single day and trying to get back at the same time every single day, it is a true safety hazard and I oppose it. One other comment about this is that in Briarwick subdivision, I am one of those that is on the fence line and only seven of us receive notice. And if that notice happened to be sitting in someone's mailbox, no one knew about it at all. So the majority of the people in our subdivision weren't even aware that this was going to happen. Now you take Lakeway, who's going to be directly affected by this, across the street, you take Westlake, you take Northwood that received a few notices. It's a lot of people, a lot of residents, a lot of children, a lot of people making this commute every morning, every evening. It's not safe. I support development. The area is a wonderful area, we want to keep it that way and I have no issue with that, but the safety is the biggest issue. My kids need to get to and from and everybody else's children need to get to and from school safely and without harm, so.
Thank you, Leo. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
I have a quick question. Because this is contested, how many votes does it need to pass?
It requires 20% in order to require a higher vote, so just a simple majority.
Mayor, Commissioners, so we live in the Westlake neighborhood and part of the issue here...
Please state your name.
Oh, Fernando Perez, I'm sorry. Part of the issue is that we didn't get notices and to my understanding, the way planning works, you have to be within a certain number of feet of that, you know, the lot in question. But because we live across the street in Westlake, we didn't get any notices. We found out about this through social media channels and, you know, different messaging apps and things like that. But I can tell you, speaking on behalf of about 50 families that live in the Westlake community, plus a new subdivision that's being built behind us, which is Westlake Estates. There's about, you know, 50 families currently and there'll be a lot more. Everyone's against this project. First of all, safety, that's the first thing. As the gentleman stated, we're not against development. Brownsville's growing, we need more housing, but if anything, it should be single-family homes because if you stand on that property and you look around Lakeway, Briarwick, Northwood, Westlake Estates, it's all single-family homes. So why would we put an apartment complex right smack in the middle of that? So I don't want to go on and state the safety reasons, they already stated so eloquently, but just know that as residents of Westlake, we're also against this project.
Thank you, Fernando. Appreciate it.
I have one more question. I hear that people are saying they did not get their notices. Was this notice correctly?
Commissioner, yes, it's noticed correctly. As you can see, we can go back to the area where we're noticed. Go ahead, put it where we're noticed. And if you see where the red line is, Commissioner, that is the areas that are noticed. And so it was noticed correctly. We also are looking at the suggestion about expanding it, but we got to be careful that we don't become more restrictive than federal or state law as well. There's laws that we have to abide by on how do we expand it, but we're looking into it. As of now, if we noticed, we noticed anybody within that red area.
I just would hate to take action if they were not all notified correctly.
It was correctly.
It was notified correctly.
The problem here, as you can see, is the 200 feet, because of the empty space around it, isn't working. So I was encouraging you all to expand the notice and there's even more reason when the surrounding area doesn't contain homes.
And we are doing... And I know, and we are, we are doing, Commissioner, we just gotta make sure that we're not being, it's, it's, it's the line-
We can't supersede the state.
We gotta be careful with this.
We have to, we have to, we have to abide by what the state, the city will never be able to supersede the state.
And what does the state require?
The state requires it at, at about, at about two hundred.
Well, that's what we're looking at. Commissioner, we are looking at that.
So you're looking at what they require?
Yes, and what the requirement and what level we can, these individu, these individuals start, uh, these cases start like a month ago or two months ago because of the meetings, but we are looking to see how we can expand it without causing it to be-
I, I, I think there, I think there is a way, but would you mind coming to the podium so we can?
My name is Joe Farley, I live in Northwood. Um, my wife and I bought our house ten years ago, and one of the reasons, we bought there because there was no apartment complexes in that neighborhood, anywhere around. And now all of a sudden, you guys are looking at the idea of saying, well, forget you, we're gonna put a, we're debating whether or not to put an apartment complex here. Um, you can't just go in and change the rules. You had a plan, and the plan was there wasn't gonna be apartments there, and now you're saying, well, maybe we're gonna change it. Look how many housing areas are affected by this, how many people are affected. They bought a house, and maybe not all of them care, but I care, because this is my retirement home, and you guys are gonna think about putting in apartment complexes.
I need to bring something to your attention, I'm sorry to interrupt you. This is not us, this is somebody who's applying to do this, and they're coming to seek the permission of the city, but we're in no way promoting it. In other words, the landowner has the right to come to us and say, this is what I wanna build. They have a right to build something right now, but it's not city-initiated, it's coming to the city to be heard.
I, I, I understand that, but you guys have the power to change that. It's up to you whether or not this gets built. And so that's what I'm saying, we bought here because it wasn't apartment complexes in the area, and now all of a sudden, there's a chance that may change, and it's like you're just changing the rules. It was already set up this way, why would you even consider changing it? There's other places apartments can be built, and I understand they need to be built, you need the housing area, but why here?
Okay, I, I tell you what, kind sir, we'll have to give you an explanation of the rules, and I, we don't wanna argue with you, but we understand what you're saying, and I don't wanna cut you off, but there are rules and there are regulations, so we all-
But I want you to take into consideration-
And we will.
-that what this does on the home values of the people living in this area, and I've got studies where it shows it affects the home values. So this needs to be something, you guys have to consider this.
Okay.
And back to this two hundred feet, now I'm really questioning, is it the minimum two hundred feet, or is that the maximum that you have to notify people? I mean, it's really, when you look at all the homeowners that are affected by this, and you only weigh two hundred feet.
No, I mean, so we are, we are looking-
Anyway, we'll, we'll get, we'll get an explanation, um, but thank you so much for your input, okay? Um, this is a public hearing, um, is there anybody else on comment on this one?
May I?
Uh, but you'll have to step up, just like everyone else, if you don't mind.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the commission, I'm Basilio Gomez, I'm here, on behalf of the owner. I'm also a resident of Lakeway, which is right across the street. Um, I, I think that, uh, you know, by adding, by us agreeing to that, to that, uh, light on, uh, Lakeway Drive would, uh, would resolve all the traffic issues and, uh, safety issues that they're talking about. Also, we're closing the, the other exit, we show an exit on the original plan, we're closing it off, so we only have one entrance and one exit, so it'll be a controlled, uh, entrance and exit. You know, it's re-controlled by light, traffic light, so I don't think it's, I mean, it's there, the light is there right now on Lakewood side, it'll be on, on our side now, so I think that'll, that issue would be, you know, no problem, you know? Uh, also, this is gonna be a, a high-end apartment complex, it's not gonna be a housing, low-income or anything like that. These apartments are three bedrooms, two and a half bath, one car garage, okay? These are about seventy, seventeen hundred, eighteen hundred square feet. So, I mean, nobody, I mean, it's gonna be a high-class, as you can see the, the renderings, uh, we intend to do this a high-class, you know, security, all those, all those things, you know? Uh, I think it's gonna enhance the area, I think it's gonna, uh, you know, it's not gonna detract from our, our neighborhoods. I'm, 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 I live in Lakeway, you know, and, uh, I, I think it's gonna be the best and the highest use for that property. I mean, you can't do anything else with it.
Okay, I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. Uh, everything he said is fine, however, uh, we have to consider two things. Uh, Candy Road, Candy Road is a narrow road. For that kind of, of traffic that we're talking about, it's gonna create problems, not only for the people around there, but for the city, as far as extending Candy Road. The other one is the light they keep talking about. The traffic light they keep talking about is, will be about a block and a half to two blocks from the present light, where all the accidents are happening at present, okay? All, uh, my wife and I and my son leave right at the corner of Lakeway Drive where the traffic light is, and that's where all the accidents are happening, bad accidents. They plan on putting a light further down. That light will be about a block and a half from that light. There's no way it's gonna work.
Yeah.
No way. We have all single-family dwellings around there. Every, if you look around there, except for the business sector, on, on Alton Glor, everything is single-family dwellings. An apartment complex would not work in that area, especially that piece of land right there. Only one entrance, only one exit, bad idea, 'cause they're gonna have all that many, all those, uh, rooms available, it's gonna create a lot of problems there.
Thank you, thank you so much. Anyone else on this issue? Um, there seems to be substantial concern here about the safety, and I think there ought to be some, a way that we need to try to, uh, to take a look at the number of people within a certain area and what, what, what that area will sustain without creating a, a, a problem. It would seem to me that that's, that's appropriate somewhere in here, but anyway, I'm sorry.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, I'm Luis Lesama, I also represent the owners, and I own property there on Lak, on Lakeway too.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wanted to let you know, right now, it is approved for apartments, okay? The density right now is forty-four. We, we just wanna go a little bit up. Right now, it is approved for apartments. So if we, if we wanted to come in, we could, we could, uh, build forty-four units, that's what I, I was told before we started this.
Okay, Luis, thank you. Anyway, it's, it's just, uh-
That was, that was my question.
So, um, the used district dwelling does not allow apartments. Um, the area district is what he's referring to, however, um, the, uh, used district needs to be changed in order to allow apartments.
So even, so you're saying the forty-four is not true?
It, it has to have the right used district.
Right, okay. I just, my, my concern is that we have an overwhelming amount of people who are opposed to it, who are in the area, and I feel like they should be represented by allowing the portion to include their home in the radius.
Okay. This is a public hearing, uh, session, um, is there any, I'm sorry?
I was gonna motion to close public hearing unless there's someone else.
My only concern is, as is always when we have issues pertaining to Alton Glor, is what do these people do with their investment?
No, and I, and I, I fully appreciate that.
You know, and-
I, I think that, that the, uh, the public needs to know that we're cognizant of both sides of, of the issue. It might be at this particular point, uh, might consider we wanna table this?
Well, I'd like to stand up for the constituents in District Four, and numerous constituents have contacted me against this, and I've list, I've read all their arguments, and I, I agree with them, and especially Mr. Farley, and to respond to what he's saying, when they bought that property, it was already zoned, this, they're trying to get us to change the zoning to allow for this, and it, there's an overwhelming group that, that don't want this. And I think the safety concerns are legitimate, and I wanna encourage, if we go forward today, that all of you vote against this, okay? So I'm encouraging a negative vote on this and not to pass it.
Okay, we, we have a motion on the floor to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to deny.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
May I please have roll call? Nay.
Nay.
Oh, wait.
No, 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 wait, wait.
You're, you're backwards. We're trying- Order by roll call, yeah, you, just to proceed it now, you have to start, Mayor, A, B, one, two, three, four.
Other words, this is, this is a motion to deny this request, and I vote-
To deny, okay, sorry. Go ahead and go call.
I agree to deny, okay? I vote for the denial.
I vote for the denial.
I vote for the denial.
I voted for the denial.
Please do.
Can we share moguia?
Deny.
Deny.
Okay, so it'll be denied. Item number nine, public hearing, go ahead.
Public hearing number nine, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash zero twelve, to rezon from dwelling A to apartment G for lot seven, block twenty-one, Gardens Park subdivision, and a one-point-eight-six-two acre tract out of Share Twelve, Espirito Santo Grand located near Center Drive.
This property is two-point-zero-three acres, it is located near Center Drive. Um, surrounding the property is mostly dwelling as well as some apartment, um, apartment H specifically to the north and to the southeast. This is part of the core west district in our future land use plan. The core west district is predominantly residential, with substantial allotments of community facilities and institutional uses, of which only small portions of commercial land and institutional uses are permitted. These uses should be neighborhood and service-oriented, residential uses should have a density of three dwelling units per acre, and should primarily consist of single-family dwellings and attached apartments. To the north, south, east, and west of this property are single-family dwellings, also to the, uh, south is apartments, as well as the vacant land, um, across Center Drive is developing as apartments currently. Here's a two-hundred-foot radius map. There were twenty-nine mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling A to apartment G.
Okay. Public hearing, anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Could I make a request? This page, for some reason, y'all don't include that one in our package. Can you include that, the mailout part of it? I don't know why, unless you don't have it in time, but I never can find that.
I'm sorry, which, the two-hundred-foot?
The page, no, go, that one, that page, where it shows you how many you mailed out and how many are opposed, uh, can you just include it in?
We can. Um, uh, the opposition, they have up until a couple of days before, um, City Commission to oppose, so it might not be updated when we submit it.
If you have it.
Okay, very good. Now, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number ten.
Public hearing number ten, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash zero thirteen, to rezon from dwelling A to dwelling G for lot thirteen, block sixteen, Colonia Acacia located at thirty-three thirty-five Short Street.
This property is zero-point-one-three-seven-seven of an acre. Uh, it is located near, uh, East Avenue off Short Street. Um, surrounding it is dwelling, as well as, um, dwelling retail to the east and apartments.
Anyone here on this issue, it's a public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Oh, oh, wait, nevermind, I'm sorry, somebody wants to say something.
Come to Southmost, we love everybody. Bring your project to us.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Jessica Parrientos. I'm here on behalf of my dad. He wants to build some duplex, and I was just gonna show you some pictures that it's just by, uh, Good Shepherd Catholic Church, and it's, uh, there's other houses, and we just wanna build a duplex. I don't know if you wanna see the houses, it's a picture of the houses, or it's-
Uh, thank you, Jessica.
We're good.
Can I see?
Yeah, we're good, we're good, thank you.
Well, no, I was just curious. She got so close and I didn't get to see it, so I was like, whee!
All right, guys, um, does, does someone have a motion to close public hearing?
Want to close public hearing? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have one more for-
Positive.
Positive?
Motion to reopen public hearing?
Motion to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it by, we'll waive it, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Christina Raisa, and I live next door to that, uh, duplex that they're trying to build to get zoned for. The only concern that I have is the traffic. Uh, as the street says, it's a short street, it's a cul-de-sac, uh, and there's only barely one space for one car to freely pass on that street. And now with a duplex, I don't know the, the construction or the design of the duplex yet, but the, the lot is fifty by one-fifty, so I don't know where those cars are going to get to park.
Okay.
Do you have a picture of what it's going to look like?
I'm sorry, that's-
Oh, here, here.
But we have other houses, like I said, for other duplexes, and there's some, uh, portables that they just put there. And our duplexes have been in here by me, and I don't see your-
Listen, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, why don't you, you wanna show it to the young lady there?
But the code, our code requires that every duplex must have one parking space, right? Okay.
Yeah.
That's the only concern, the parking. I know that she has those, um-
Parking we always have, it's gonna be a duplex, it's gonna be four spaces.
Okay, in case they have two cars.
Thank you, thank you all very much, maybe y'all can go visit.
Thank you.
This is, this is great.
All those good.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I was gonna say, you should have your own TV show, but you do.
Approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eleven.
Public hearing number eleven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash zero fifteen, to rezon from apartment H to professional office H for lot one, block one, Oliveta subdivision located at three thirty-four, Morningside Road.
This property is zero-point-two-one-eight acres. Um, they are, the proposed use is for a daycare, it's currently zoned apartment, and they're applying for first commercial. Um, along the south side of Morningside, it is zoned dwelling as well as some apartment. Across Morningside, it is zoned light industrial seven C. This is part of the transition, e, transition east district in our future land use plan, uh, which should be approximately half residential with the remaining uses of balance of community facilities, commercial, institutional, and industrial land uses. Here is an aerial. To the north, south, east, and west are single-family dwellings, also to the north and to the south are some commercial businesses, um, to the east, there are civic institutions and commercial businesses, as well as to the west. Here's the two-hundred-foot radius map. There were twenty-one mailouts and zero written opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from apartment H to professional office H.
Very good. Anyone here on this issue? Uh, go ahead, yes, sir.
Mayor and commissioners.
Please state your.
My first time here.
I know, it's good, but nice to have you here, but please state your name.
My name is Joe Reyna.
Joe?
I'm the one that's requesting the zoning. A little over you on me, I'm the owner of the property, I'm a retired teacher, thirty-five years with the district, five years into my retirement. And as I go into more into my retirement, it's a little bit harder to make ends meet.
Sure.
So, anyway, medical insurance goes up and all that. The property there had, since two thousand and two had been used as a daycare before, and there's been about three or four owners that's gone through. And, and then this March, it was, it was, we had, we were gonna set it up as a daycare again, we went to, when we went to get to the city to get the, everything approved, they told us that it was not zoned, they was changed or not zoned as a daycare. So I had to find out the process and I'm here. And all I wanted to do is just change it from, from A to make it a daycare, I don't think it will affect anything on the taxes because it's still, it's zoned as the same. And.
I don't think anybody's opposing it, I don't know if anybody, is anybody here opposing it?
We love you.
No, I don't think so, Joe, so you're, you're pretty good shape here.
Okay.
Good luck.
I didn't want you to talk your way out of this one. You may talk yourself into opposition.
As I was watching, I said, I need some.
And have a great, have a great retirement, okay?
Yeah, good luck on your investment.
The more issues I saw, the more I wrote.
Thank you for coming, though, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you're, you're good shape, Joe.
You're good.
Item number twelve.
Public hearing number twelve, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash zero sixteen to rezon from dwelling A to dwelling H for two point three hundred and seventy-five acres out of a four point oh acre tract in block twenty-eight, Acacia Lake Gardens subdivision in share nineteen, Espirito Santo grant located at two sixty-five Calle Milpe Verde.
This property is two point three seven five acres. It's currently zoned dwelling A and they're asking for apartment H. To the north is dwelling and along Calle Milpe Verde is commercial, including medium commercial and general, and general retail. This is part of the core east district in our future land use plan, which is primarily residential with a large amount of community facilities as well, residential uses should have an average density of three dwelling units per acre and consist of single family homes. Here is the aerial map. You can see to, in the north, south, east, and west, there are single family dwellings, also to the south, there are some commercial businesses, also south along the property, there is a drainage canal. Here's the two hundred foot radius map. There were forty-six mailouts and zero written opposition, the planning and zoning commission supports rezoning from dwelling A to dwelling H.
Okay, anyone here on this issue?
No more parking for our kidmas, that's all right. I'd rather take apartments.
Okay, is there a motion to close?
Want to close? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Want to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirteen.
Public hearing number thirteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash zero seventeen to rezon from light retail V to medium commercial V for four acres consisting of tract one, tract two, and tract three of lot one, block one, M semano partition located near Paredes Line Road.
This property is four acres, it's along Paredes Line, across Paredes is Jibic Industrial subdivision. Also to the north and to the south, there is light retail, also dwelling retail to the south and to the north there is general retail. The industrial subdivision is zoned medium industrial eight C. This is part of the employment hub district and town corridor in our future land use plan, the employment hub district is designed to be a mixture of uses organized around neighborhoods that have industrial uses as their anchors. The town corridor is primarily residential with small clusters of commercial land uses at regularly spaced intervals. Here's the aerial map. To the north, east, and west, there is undeveloped land, to the south, there are single family dwellings and commercial businesses. Here's the two hundred foot radius map. There were twenty-four mailouts and zero written opposition, the planning and zoning commission supports rezoning from light retail V to medium commercial V.
Anyone here on this issue?
Want to close? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item number fourteen.
Public hearing number fourteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash zero eighteen to rezon from light apartment H, general retail J, light industrial J to general retail J for zero point forty-one acres for lots four, five, and six, block thirteen, Paredes Track Edition located at eighteen hundred East Van Buren Street.
So this is zero point four one of an acre, it's located off Van Buren near International. They're asking that it be rezoned to general retail four CJ. Along International, there is light industrial seven C. Surrounding the property is apartment use, and to the southeast, there is dwelling and some medium retail three C. This is part of the downtown node in our future land use plan. This district is primarily commercial land uses, but residential, community facilities, and institutional uses are also present. Here's the aerial map. To the north, south, east, and west, there are single family dwellings, also there are civic institutions and commercial businesses. Here's the two hundred foot radius map. There were thirty-six mailouts and zero written opposition, the planning and zoning commission supports this rezoning from apartment H, general retail J, and light industrial J to general retail J.
Anyone here on this issue?
Want to close? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Want to approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item number fifteen.
Public hearing number fifteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash zero nineteen dash S to allow apartments and apartment use in general retail H for zero point seven six five one acres of lot four, El Jardín Re subdivision, block two hundred and four, and zero point twenty-two sixty-seven acres of abstract two Lopez High School subdivision, part lot one, block one located at thirty-two twenty-eight South Dakota Avenue.
This is one point zero five acres, they are asking for a specific use permit to allow apartments, this is along South Dakota and Maverick. On this map, the white is outside of city limits and everything else in area zoned dwelling. It is part of the emerging city east district in our future land use plan, this district is split between residential and non-residential uses and a greater degree of flexibility is allowed, making this district more responsive to the varying demands presented by its close proximity to the employment hub. Here is the aerial map. To the, to the north of the property is Lopez High School. To the south, there are single family dwellings and a commercial business, to the west, there is undeveloped land and some more single family dwellings. Here's the two hundred foot radius map. And here is the site plan. It's a proposed twenty-one units. There were seventeen mailouts and zero written opposition, the planning and zoning commission supports a specific use permit to allow apartments in general retail H with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
Anyone here on this issue?
Close? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Want to approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item number sixteen.
Public hearing number sixteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash zero twenty dash S to allow storage units alike commercial use in professional office G for an estimated one point five eighteen acres out of the front portion of a five point acre tract of land out of a certain east twenty point zero acres, block twenty-seven, El Jardín subdivision, tract thirty-three, share nineteen, Espirito Santo grant located at four zero zero five Jaime Zapata Avenue.
This is one point five, one eight of an acre. They're asking for a specific use permit to allow storage units. To the south of the property is dwelling as well as some general retail, to the west of the property, there is general retail, apartments, medium retail, as well as some more professional office, to the east, there is dwelling and apartments. This is part of the transition central district in our future land use map, this district is comprised of mostly residential land with a mix of other uses. Here is the aerial. To the north, there are apartments and some undeveloped land, to the south, there are single family dwellings, to the east, there are single family dwellings and civic institution, to the west, there are single family dwellings, undeveloped land, and commercial businesses. Here is the two hundred foot radius map. And here is the site plan, this is for storage units. There were eighteen mailouts and zero written opposition, the planning and zoning commission supports a specific use permit to allow storage units in professional office G with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
Anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close, public hearing?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, item number seventeen.
Public hearing number seventeen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash zero twenty-one to rezon from dwelling G to dwelling H for lots nine, ten, eleven, and twelve Canyon Valley subdivision replat located near Manchaca Court.
This is approximately zero point six four of an acre, the intended use is for apartments. To the north of the property, there is dwelling as well as light retail, to the south, there is apartment and light retail, as well as general retail, and to the east, there is also general retail. This is part of the transition central district in our future land use plan, the transition central district is comprised of mostly residential land with a mix of other uses. Residential uses should have a density of two dwelling units per acre and consist primarily of single family dwellings, commercial uses should be neighborhood and service oriented, and industrial uses should include both light and medium industry and warehousing. Here is the aerial, to the north, there are single family dwellings, to the east, there's undeveloped land and commercial businesses, to the south, there are single family dwellings, apartments, and commercial businesses, and to the west, there are single family dwellings, apartments, and civic institutions. Here's the two hundred foot radius map. There were twenty-eight mailouts and zero, zero written opposition, the planning and zoning commission supports this rezoning from dwelling G to dwelling H.
Anyone here on this issue?
Good evening, mayor, members of the commission, my name is Tony Manchaca, I'm the developer of the subdivision. And I have here, if I may, we did a property owner association. We have a letter of support by the. Good luck. We all support the. The change to apartment. The original, our application was for apartment use, not dwelling H, we are asking for apartment H. If you would please go back to the aerial map. There is apartments, those, that, those structures below the subdivision, those are all apartments, and if you look into page. Page three of our, our packet, this is the way they look, these apartment units. So at this point, the only thing I would ask is, why would staff not support the apartment use in the area if there are already existing apartments? And I would ask that this commission approve for apartment H use in that district, again, I am the developer and I hope to be the contractor in this project. It's gonna change, right? What happens?
So, Mr. Manchaca applied for apartment H, the planning and zoning commission only recommended dwelling H with the recommendation to apply for a specific use permit. Just like in the other case, apartments are not allowed in dwelling, so one or the other will have to happen for these apartments to be built. Here, as you can see in this map, right here. This property has received a specific use permit to allow apartments, that would be the green coloring over the blue.
Already approved?
Already approved.
So, we're not, we're not approving a specific use, what are you asking, I got confused, I'm sorry.
The applicant asked for apartment H.
I understand now.
The planning and zoning commission recommended dwelling H.
So what are we voting on? Dwelling H?
Yes.
So what does he have to do, he understands what he has to do for a specific use?
I have to pay an extra five hundred dollars, man, basically. Which deters, you know, growth, development here in the area. It's nonsensical to have somebody trying to do something in the area, and we have not only no opposition, but we have letter of support from the owner saying, hey, we want this. And first they have to pay a five hundred dollars and another five hundred dollars to do just something that can be done by this commission, right now.
I'm confused as to which area this is exactly, it's on Old Port Isabel?
So, right here is Cascade Park.
The problem, I think lawyer, the problem is, can we change?
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's, I don't know that I can change it, the horse in the middle of the stream, it would seem like, you know, because that's what the planning zoning approved, they got no opposition, and that's what we're looking at right here, right, Tim?
Right, I don't think we can.
We, I can't change.
You can't amend the item, right?
I can't amend.
I can't amend to something differently, and that's unfortunate, but that's what, you know, we can, we can only do what we can, what we're asked to do, and, and we can't change it, we don't have that authority, I don't think. So, but Tony, thank you so much for being here, and, and know that we're, we're not trying to oppose development, I think it's very comprehensive in what we're trying to do, and we are doing our level best to try to accommodate people, so thank you for being here.
Can we, like, make a motion to table this so that they can bring it back later and maybe work out, he may have reconsider on the.
Whatever the commission wishes, but the thing about it.
If we have to pay another five hundred dollars, I would just take the dwelling H at this point, you know, the, my, my, the property owners really wanted to want to start the project, and we'll see however.
Okay, well, yeah, this, this is what's on here, and it's up to the, anybody else here on this thing? If not, entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor, point of order. Was there, with the discussion that we just held with them, was that something that they decided on later, when it was already filed, or through the process? Was that something that happened?
The planning and zoning commission made that recommendation at their commission meeting.
P and Z made it?
Yes.
Our application was for apartment use, we go to your, the notice here, the original notice was filed, I had it, there was apartments, originally, the item was, ordinance number was from dwelling D to apartment H, they changed it to dwelling H.
So, can we overturn P and Z? And him not have to pay the five hundred dollars?
But that's not the item on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't think you can do that legally, I think you'd have to either table it and go back through that process, or deny it, and then.
If it's a question of money, the board can, the commission can recommend that the city manager waive that fee.
Yeah, well, the, the problem is that, Tim, we're, we're dealing with an issue right here that we, we, we can't just kind of change different things at different times.
In other words.
In other words, you can either deny it or table it.
We could table it and give the city manager an opportunity to waive the fee, is that what you're saying?
That, that's correct.
But that's gonna have to go through again through whatever else he's asking for, and I don't know whether, whatever he wants to do.
Mayor, my point of order was only was because that's what he applied for, P and Z changed it, but yet we overturn P and Z all the time, that, you know, and that's, that's my question, in other words, do we have the authority? The way we've turned P and Z, we've overturned.
We either deny, or accept, or table, that's the only thing we can do, I don't think you can amend the, whatever.
I don't believe we can do that.
No, I, I know we can't.
It would, it would come in, it would be have to come in as an appeal, then that'd be the issue, right now, this is.
Appeal's a different thing, but at this particular point, you either gotta go up, or down, or nada. That's the way, that's the way the law.
Are you willing to appeal?
Also, also, if you, if you table it, it requires posting and everything again, so it kind of resets the clock too.
Okay, public hearing has been closed, okay, now there's, is there a motion to approve, or whatever?
So we approve, they can appeal, I mean, at least to give them an option, right?
They, they can do, you know, it's a sub deal.
No, if you approve it, and they're gonna have that, that's gonna be the zoning.
Yeah, and they, and you can change it, but that's gonna cost more money, and then he doesn't want to waste any more time, what he's trying to do is expedite this, and he's willing to go along with this, is there a motion to approve?
Got to close, close, public hearing.
Uh, we did.
We did.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Because, because I don't, I think if, if you approve it, then he gets a chance to move on, that's what he wants to do.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, Tony, you can do that, you can change your mind, good luck to you, son. Item number eighteen.
Public hearing number eighteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash zero twenty-two to rezon from general retail G to medium commercial G for fifty-nine point thirty-three acre tract of land, more or less out of blocks three. acre tract of land, more or less out of blocks three, four, seventeen, eighteen, thirty-one, and thirty-two, out of Rincon subdivision, share twenty-two, Espiritu Santo Grant, located near Farm to Market five-eleven.
This case is to rezon a fifty-nine-point-three-three acre tract. The intended use is to be Public Utility Board operation facility. North of the property, there is heavy industrial nine C. To the west, there is general retail. And to the south, there is dwelling, along with light retail and light industrial. This is part of the Emerging City Central District and the Loop Corridor. The Emerging City Central District is primarily residential and should provide housing options complementary to the adjacent Employment Hub District. The Loop Corridor is primarily commercial, but with a healthy mixture of residential, institutional, and industrial. Community facility land uses are also permitted. Here is the aerial map. This property is along five-eleven, near Old Alice. To the north, south, east, and to the west, there is undeveloped land. There is also single-family dwellings to the west, federal agency and a detention center to the south. And to the east is a civic institution and a public facility. Here's the two-hundred-foot radius map. There were twelve mailouts and zero written opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from General Retail G to Medium Commercial G.
Anyone here on this issue? Now entertain a motion to close?
Move to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Public hearing number nineteen. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash six-zero-one dash C U and ordinance allowing a conditional use permit for the sale of on-premises alcohol bar for a two-point-two-hundred-and-nine acre tract in Block forty-one and forty-two Media Luna subdivision. Also describes that as Lot three-zero-one, Country Club Estates, One Convention Center located at three-zero-one McFadden Drive.
This property is two-point-two-zero-nine acres. They have applied for a conditional use permit to allow a bar. This is located within VICC. To the north of the property, there is apartment, and to the south and the west, there is dwelling.
Is that the location of the previous clubhouse that burned down?
Yep.
No, the previous clubhouse, you can see the wreckage still right here.
Same place.
So this is at the old rental venue?
Where my prom was.
The problem, now you're dating yourself there, girl. Anyway, it's, anyone here on this issue? Now entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So you're saying it's not where the old one used to be, but it's nearby?
Correct. Where the ballroom was.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, that sounds like a synchronized motion to approve seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty.
Public hearing number twenty. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-eighteen dash nine-zero-three dash C O to rezon from Dwelling X to Dwelling A for Block one and Block two, Lazy Acres Estates replat located near Lazy Acres Road.
This is a city-initiated rezoning. For this replat, it's currently zoned Dwelling X. We're asking that it be changed to Dwelling A. North of the property, there is Dwelling X. To the south of the property, there is Dwelling Y, as well as Dwelling A. Along southmost, there is also light commercial and general retail. This is part of the Core East District in our future land use plan. The Core East District is primarily residential with a large amount of community facilities as well. Residential uses should have an average density of three dwelling units per acre and consist of single-family homes. So here is the aerial. To the north, there are single-family dwellings. Also, there to the southeast and to the west. Also, to the east and to the west are apartments and commercial businesses. You can see this land is currently vacant. Here is the two-hundred-foot radius map. So there were twenty-three mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from Dwelling X to Dwelling A with a conditional overlay to prohibit duplexes. This conditional overlay came from discussing it with the neighbors who did receive notice.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue? Now entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-one.
Next, we have the public comment period. We did receive one public comment, Mr. Joe Collin Uvalas the second. Would you please step up? I would like to just remind everyone to, well, please state your name for the record, and comments are limited to three minutes. Also, please do not address the commission as one particular commissioner. You have to address everybody together, and the commission is not required to respond to any of your comments.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioner. My name is Joe Collin Uvayis. I am a local LGBTQ activist, named Grand Marshal for Pride last year, and RGV Millennial last year as well. It has been one year since Kimberly Avila went missing from the downtown Brownsville area, and no other organization has rallied behind this case but South Texas Equality Project, a coalition of over fifty-plus intersectional organizations and nonprofits in the RGV that advocate for immigrants, Dreamers, the homeless, women's reproductive rights, as well as the LGBTQ community. Step with permission from the Main Street Program, put together yesterday a vigil at Market Square to mark the one-year anniversary of Kimberly's disappearance and to bring the community together. And this, we're gonna start censoring myself because I was asked to censor myself. A local official came to a press conference, a city official came to the press conference held here in downtown Brownsville last year and pledged a series of efforts and contributions to help Kimberly Avila's family, none of which have been followed up to, up to this date. Multiple attempts were made to reach this person after the fact, none of which they responded to or followed up on their behalf. Now, this just isn't about financial contributions, it's about social justice and keeping people in power accountable to the people they pledged to serve. This isn't about writing a proclamation declaring Pride Month officially supporting the LGBTQ community, but about actually being there in our toughest moments and keeping your word as a city official. In this case, keeping your word to the Avila family. This isn't about who said what, but about making sure that we help keep Kimberly's story alive, and that we continue to work collectively until we find out what happened to Kimberly, or provide some sort of closure for their family. One year has gone by, and we have no leads or answers in the Kimberly Avila case. Within the last couple of years, multiple cisgender women have gone missing from the RGV, and immediately, federal and local resources and funds come in. In the Kimberly Avila case, there's only one dedicated investigator from the Brownsville PD who is assigned to this case. One. It's hard not to think that there are underlying issues of homophobia and transphobia when it comes to these individuals who have been destroying flyers that the Avila family puts up every week, but from those who hold any positions of power and could do more to help a family that has suffered enough and they weren't able to be here today because they had other commitments like their jobs. Helping the oppressed and the marginalized entails you to acknowledge your own privileges. Using a position of power to silence queer people of color such as myself online simply because I decided to keep you accountable as a city official is quite frankly being tone deaf and only further perpetuates the stigma and homophobia you claim to be against. Kimberly Avila will not be forgotten. Kimberly deserves better. We deserve better, and Brownsville deserves better.
Thank you. Item number twenty-two.
Items for individual consideration. Action item number twenty-two. Consideration in action to appoint, reappoint regular members to the Building and Standards Commission.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Half of the Planning and Development Services Department, I am here to request the reappointment of three board members. We have three vacancies. We are asking for the reappointment of Mr. Fabriel Cisneros, Mr. Julian Lopez, and Mr. Roy de los Santos.
Okay. Right here, motion?
Motion to approve all three?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-three.
Action item number twenty-three. Consideration in action to acknowledge the financial statements and cash investment report for the city of Brownsville for the second quarter, which ended on March thirty-first, twenty-eighteen.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Part of your packet that was presented to you, you had financials in your packet and the presentation. I'll go over the whole presentation, I'll go over a couple of highlighted items. Financial highlights I'll go over, sales tax are above last fiscal year's numbers by three-point-six percent, or nine, or forty-nine percent above budget. PUB utility expenditures are lower than the same period of last fiscal year. This is good because that increases our general transfer from the PUB. Current hotel motel tax receipts are fifteen-point-nine percent, or seventy-four thousand higher than the same period of fiscal year twenty-seventeen. General fund expenditures, in summary, are, we're using only forty-seven-point-five percent of the budget to date. PUB cash transfers on the city increased compared to last fiscal years by four-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, eight-point-nine percent. Unemployment rate, it's low at six-point-seven percent compared to last year at seven-point-four percent. Some of the items that are a little concerning is veteran bridge revenues decreased three percent over the same period last year, but it's only one-point-five-hundred budget projections. Tax levies are about par of last year. Item of concern, building permit values, not the number, but the values of them have decreased about forty percent. This is attributed to a decrease in apartment and commercial permits, but the positive is there is an increase in residential permits showing an increase. That concludes the presentation. Any questions?
You did good, Luth.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job, Luth.
Let's have a motion to acknowledge.
Move.
I'll move for it.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number twenty-four.
Action item number twenty-four. Consideration action on resolution number twenty-eighteen dash zero thirty-three authorizing publication of notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation to finance improvements to the Brownsville South Hydraland International Airport.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, we're requesting authorization to public notice as it is intent to issue COs for the airport improvements. This notice is required before we issue the actual test. The issue's not slated to be approved until June nineteenth, and just recommending approval is.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twenty-five.
Action item number twenty-five. Consideration action to award a contract to Ambiotech Engineering for Brownsville Los Fresnos Battlefield Extension Project.
Mayor, Commissioners, last meeting you approved a, receiving a grant for one-point-six million to build a one-point-eight-mile extension to the, to the battlefield towards Los Fresnos. Now before you is a engineering contract for environmental and engineering services to kick off the process, the design and environmental process. So this is in the amount of seventy-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty dollars, and all procurement rules and procedures were followed.
To approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor say yay.